Welcome, guys. Kevin here. Go ahead with your questions.
Okay. My name's Karen LaBruto. I'm a senior planner with LaBella Associates. We're here representing the applicant in his application to the planning board for lot line adjustment, lot consolidation, site plan, and architectural review approval. So the site is on South Road, Route 9, between Friendly Ford and the Halftime and Crew Restaurant, across the street from the Neptune Plaza. It occupies approximately 11 acres. It was recently designated as part of the Crown Heights Center Overlay District. The proposed project is a mixed-use development, including six buildings. One used for a 40,000-square-foot grocery store, three mixed-use buildings with apartments above and retail, and also non-retail service personal businesses below, and then two commercial buildings. Twenty-six dwelling units are proposed, 85,400 square feet of non-residential square footage, and the dwelling units are approximately 30,000 square feet total. So here we have the building description, and you can see the major grocer to the north of the site. At the east and south of the site, we have our major retailer. In the center of the site, we have the mixed-use buildings with the six dwelling units above and service and personal businesses below. Down at the front here, we have a fast-food restaurant with a drive-thru and a restaurant. And then at the southwest corner, retail and a restaurant.
Sorry, would you mind stating like how many stories each building is as you go through?
How many stories?
Yes.
Sure. The max permitted is four stories, and we're suggesting, I'm sorry, we're requesting four stories. The maximum feet is 65 feet. When we get a little further into the process and have our architectural renderings and all that, we'll have more detail on that subject.
For each building or just some buildings?
For each building right now, we're proposing generally about two stories, but the, sorry, generally about two stories, but you know, some of those second floors or first floors might be a little taller than kind of your regular, so we don't know the maximum.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sorry.
I know it's early on, but just trying to get a feel.
Two stories, yes. So I said it's 11 acres. It's comprised of two tax lots and a 1.78 portion of the former, sorry, the golf course, an area that is not presently used for any golf activities. It has adequate frontage and depth. As we just talked about, the height, you can have a maximum of four stories, 65 feet, but we're going for two. There's a minimum non-retail density requirement of 25%. We're at 27%. That's that service and personal business that I talked about. The maximum residential density allowed is 44 dwelling units. We've got 26. Maximum single retail use is 70,000 square feet. We've got 40,000 square feet, and minimum open space is 10%. We're at 10.5. So I know that the town just went through a comprehensive planning update, and we feel that the project meets the infill development criteria, many of which are met just at the very beginning by the fact that we were recently designated as a Crown Heights Center Overlay District. I won't go into too much detail there. It's in the EAF as well. So the open space up here in the southeast corner, we've created a terrace open space, and as we go forward, we're going to work better to provide connectivity through the site to that space. The idea is that it's a passive open space. The walls are about four feet high. The space between the walls is about 10 feet. It's about lounging, hanging out. You know, maybe you're getting your takeout from the fast-food restaurant or one of the restaurants, and you're just kind of being together. So it's an open space to hang out. I've also identified several of the other areas that we're indicating as passive open space amongst the buildings. The landscaping is generally deciduous, lots of maple trees, there's honey locusts, and then we have coniferous, I believe it's Colorado blue spruce, right here along the southern property line with Friendly Ford. So grading and drainage. The current conditions, the site is heavily sloped up in elevation to the east and southeast. It currently drains to the storm sewer Route 9 and sheet flows onto adjacent properties. It's compacted, you know, it's a former cement plant, and obviously, there's the former retail uses. There's substantive impervious cover, and there's no substantive stormwater management treatment at this time. Our project will bring more gradual grades in the development area. It will continue to slope in elevation to the west to meet the adjoining grades. There are several retaining walls, one at the rear of the grocery, one between the grocery and the major retailer. There's a pretty big topographical shift there at the southern edge, adjoining the Friendly Ford there, and then, of course, in the terrace area, which we just spoke about. There are three detention practices and one bioretention practice, and treatment is provided by bioretention and filter systems. It is a redevelopment project by DCE standards, however, we are increasing impervious. Water and sewer, gallons per day, 28,000 or so. Proposed water connection, six-inch ductile iron water main connection. We know now that we can only have one connection based on the comments, and so we'll make that edit. We are exploring additional options as it pertains to the sewer connection. As part of our submission, we showed a pump station at the rear of the site, making a connection to a manhole and to the force main on the west side of Route 9, but we're, like I said, considering our options, and we'll have further information as part of our future submission. Traffic. Several intersections were studied. Improvements are needed, traffic signal upgrades, multiple lane exit from the site. We are not showing that currently, but we will be modifying our design to create that. Southbound left-turn lane length increase is needed. We are, you know, we have an application for the highway work permit into the state DOT and are actively trying to get a meeting with them because obviously, they will have a lot of impact on our project. And we also plan to coordinate with the Dutchess County Bus with regard to bus access. We have four EV parking spaces, and we'll be providing more as we go forward. So we did receive a number of comments, and as a result of that, we discussed yesterday some changes to the project. I think we have four entries or four accesses right now. We're going to bring it down to two major accesses, one from, one across from the Neptune Road, and then the northernmost access will remain. We are proposing that the access at the very south end with, next to the Friendly Ford is an emergency access only with a gate, possibly at a slightly different grade just to really demarcate it's not in use. We will be removing the jug handle access. Of course, this is all subject to DOT, and so meeting with them, you know, may change some of these things. The sewer, as I mentioned, we're pursuing some alternative design options, and so that will impact our ability to fully answer the questions that were given to us as part of the comment letter, but we hope as part of future submissions quickly to work that out and get that in detail. Drive-through, it was pointed out that the drive-through design is not optimal. We recognize this. It's obviously conflicted by the need to add additional exit lanes and also by whatever decisions are made regarding access, so we'll be working through that. Connection to the golf course, the site plan as it is today does not preclude a future connection, however, as we all know, there is no proposed project right now, so we are not proposing any sort of connection to the golf course at this time. We do have connections provided to the Halftime and Crew property, no connection to Friendly Ford because it's quite a topographical shift there. The grocery, so this is a comment that came from Dutchess County that they suggested that the grocery be located at the southern end of the site and the, you know, kind of smaller retail uses and dwelling units be located in the northern. There's a deed restriction on the southern parcel that prohibits the ability to locate the grocery there. We also feel that, not just us, but the grocer feels it's not the best location for a grocer. As you come up driving north on Route 9, you notice that there's a big swath of forested area, and then you kind of see the, boom, the Friendly Ford, and then if the grocer was back there, I mean, it would really just not be, it's obscured. It's obscured by the visibility from the roadway, and it's just not the best place. But aside from that, it's prohibited by deed.
Unless I was up front with the parking behind.
True, but yes. Additional residential dwelling units. This is, the dwelling units are limited by the amount of parking that's possible on the site. So to get a good mix, it's just not possible to increase the number of dwelling units. So I've tried to run through this as quickly as possible. This is our approvals. There are a number of them, and if you have any questions, I also have the site plan here, and we can look at that in more detail.
All right, thanks for your proposal. Go to Kristin.
Thank you for breezing right through that to get us back on track for this meeting. So this is the applicant's first appearance. Of course, there are many comments. The application is on for seeker review, lot line revision, site plan, architectural review. Staff has designated this as a type-one action for seeker purposes. It will be subject to a coordinated review. At this particular time, given that it's the first appearance before the planning board, we're recommending that staff, or the planning board circulate its intent for lead agency. There are, in reviewing the materials that were, you know, the materials that were submitted were hefty and, you know, inclusive, but I think that, you know, we're just looking for some consultation. This is just building the project record, so I know that that will continue as we go through the review. Lot line revision review component, again, essentially for the board's own benefit, I've essentially just cut and pasted the code language out of the lot line revision chapter of our town code, but that's for the board's benefit, but also for the applicants, just so you know what we're looking for when it comes time for those filings, and also just in terms of deadlines. Obviously, that is the least of your concern at this current moment, but, you know, that never helps when it comes to project planning, just timing. So for site plan review, I will just preface the comments that I've provided, you know, I did try to give as detailed a review based on the submission that was provided, and I know that we, you know, we sort of met concurrent to the submission, so I'm sure that many of these comments would have been headed off if we, you know, had met prior to, but I do think that it could be beneficial to have town staff as part of those meetings, consultations with DOT, county health department, I know, also just other staff in general, I think would like to actively sit down and just discuss. I think it could help just from an efficiency of the review standpoint. I think that would be beneficial for everyone involved. So I'm not going to go through every comment that I've provided.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. I was like, what did I say? But, you know, there were things that I was glad to hear that you were already thinking about, like the EV. I mean, that's fresh off, you know, hot off the press from the town. We have a whole code section now, so being proactive about elements like that. I have my alma mater calling me to ask for money, sorry. And just looking at, you know, the access to and from Route 9, I think, and the site layout and design is just going to be critical moving forward. And so once we can kind of nail that down, I think many of these other elements will start to fall into place, and I think having the understanding of the deed restriction about the layout and dictating kind of where the grocery store is going, that's also helpful information at this time. I would also like to point out that I know that you are actively working through those consultations I had mentioned about the seeker review, and it looks like OPRHP has already actually provided a no-impact memo, so that will be, if you could just provide that when you do your next submission, I have printed it all for myself, but that would be great just for the project record. So at this time, staff is just recommending that the planning board circulate for its lead agency intent for a type-one action, and then would defer with comments.
Great, thank you.
Oh, I guess I should also point out that we have Kevin with JMC on in place of Mark for this evening, representing traffic engineer, and obviously, Andy again for sites of all.
Great, thanks, Kristin. It is a big project, so start with Andy, the water sewer issues and other things.
So nor will I go through all of my comments.
And one or two.
Of course, it's like Kristin said, it's a big project. We have a lot of things to say about it. I'm just going to, I think you covered a lot of the things that we've mentioned in our comments. I am going to point out that, based on our experience with some other larger projects in the town, I highly recommend that you design everything to town standards in the event that a subdivision is needed in the future, especially as far as water and sewer is concerned, in the event that a transportation corporation is required, or that if the town deems it appropriate to take over operation of those lines. I do have some questions about the SWIP, so I'd like to set up a meeting just to kind of review those in detail. We don't need to go over those here. Obviously, there's some easements over joining property on properties that I have questions about. I understand the access to Friendly Ford in terms of the grade change, that makes sense. I see the connection on the north to Halftime. I wonder about the, that connection appears to be in the front of the building. I wonder about connection in the rear of the building. It seems like it cuts off access to that portion of the lot. I'd like just kind of look at that, see if there's anything that can be done there. Talked about pedestrian, you know, connectivity. I think that there's definitely some things that we can do to help make that a little Again, I'm not going to go through all of them. I think you heard quite a few of our comments already in the offline meeting that we had prior to today, so that's enough for now.
Yep, yeah, a little under list there to look at. Thanks, Andy. It was Kevin, I think I heard, is on.
Yeah, I look at you, Kevin from JMC. Just kind of to go through some of our comments and just some highlights that we had through, we had a lot of technical comments that we can get through, but kind of going through with the traffic study, we were looking for Saturday analysis based on the high amount of non-residential uses proposed, and also additional signalized intersection analyzed to the south. It's back in Kill Road. For the site plan comments that we had, it seemed like some of them were already incorporated through the presentation from the applicant with, they're going to incorporate the signalized driveway that was mentioned in the traffic study as being additional exiting lanes, the one-in, one-out, and some other modifications to the driveway accesses are going to be incorporated into the site plan. So we'd like to hear that. We're looking for a shared parking study just with the multiple uses on the property and the different times that are going to be occurring through different uses. We're just looking to see how that's all going to interact and make sure that there's enough available parking throughout the day. We were requesting the turning templates for delivery vehicles, refuge vehicles, emergency access vehicles, and I think that that's our main comments throughout, and, you know, some other technical comments that we did have that can be addressed by the applicant.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Yeah, you're giving Andy a run for his money with the number of comments there.
And let's not forget that I reviewed all of your comments.
All right, let's go around the board for comments on this. Start with Peter.
My first comment is that this is going to be a welcome improvement to that site. There's no question about that. Did I hear you say that you're going to be using the existing signal at Neptune Road, or is there going to be additional signalization there?
I believe it requires additional signalization.
I'm looking at the access and egress, and I'm looking at a large parking lot particularly for this supermarket. I'm just concerned, again, about the queuing, getting in and out. You have two lanes of access and egress, actually, one for each. You have a large parking lot plus the additional, the parking just disseminated throughout the project, and I'm just wondering if that egress is going to be sufficient, which is something to take, I'm sure we're going to take a look at that somewhere down the road. You also, have you had any discussions with the town engineer about the blasting that's going to be conducted on this site?
We have not yet had any discussions pertinent to the blasting.
And the last thing I have is in the environmental assessment form, on the archaeological site, I'm just, I haven't seen this before, so I just want you to fill in the blanks for me. It basically asks if the project site or any portion thereof, you know, in or near a state historic preservation site, an archaeological site, and you have checked off yes. And earlier in the document on page 16, under historic and archaeological resources, you're basically saying that there are no eligible or listed resources that are substantially contiguous to the project site. So which is it?
So the way it works is the DCE operates something called the EAF map.
I know, I'm very familiar with it, so this is in EAF.
So it auto-fills certain sections, so it doesn't distinguish between substantially contiguous, it chooses stuff within about 2,000 feet.
I got you. I'm just a member of the EAF, so I just wanted to make sure that that's what that was, which is what I thought it was. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Ben?
Hi, just a couple of things. I noticed there are no elevations in any of these drawings.
Will be coming.
Okay. The other thing I noticed was ADA ramps, but none of them are near the handicap parking spaces. So the handicap have to go a long way to get to the ADA ramps, and I can't tell from here if the entrances and exits are by the handicap spots or are there another spot on the building.
These are well-covered in the comments that we got from your consultants, so we will be improving our plan. We have a lot of things to check off on.
Yeah, we know it's the first cut of the thing, but need to see where building entrances and exits are and things like that, for basic. Nicole?
What's happening with Davey's furniture?
They're going to have to relocate.
They're relocating? Okay, I didn't know if maybe one of the new buildings that you're going to be putting up, that they would go into that or something like that.
I'm looking to have discussions with the fellow very nice.
Yeah? Okay.
But at the moment, you know, presupposing what they may say, but they haven't expressed any interest as yet, but I haven't pressed them on the matter, so.
All right. That's all. There's a lot of questions that you guys are going to be answering, so thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things here. Is the owner of this development also the owner of the Casperkill Golf Course?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so that's, so then I'll ask my question then, because otherwise it might not have been appropriate to ask. Will the residents of the, obviously, the residential units have access to, if they're still there, all those walk and running trails that were there?
Yeah, they certainly can have, you mean on the Casperkill.
Right, that's why I was asking, because I know they had a couple of miles worth of trails there, because I used to run there.
Yeah, well, a lot of those trails are more golf cart trails than walking trails, but people do use them for walking.
Well, at one time.
Yeah, there was a track all the way around.
There's a tremendous amount of, as you say, behind the golf course, meaning further to the east.
Right.
There's a large, it used to be more of a jogging trail.
Right, because I used to run back there, that's why I said.
Yeah, no, that's still there, and it's.
And there would be access to that, so that would be amended, it would be available to people. Okay, that's it for now. I know there's going to be a lot of changes and everything.
So there might be, there might be some way to do a, just a walking path from this development to connect it there.
Yeah, I don't want anybody to get hit with a golf ball, but we'll have to figure that out.
Figure out if there's a place you can tie it in there.
I never got hit with a golf ball because it was far enough away along the perimeter.
Well, depends on who's playing.
Rocco runs really fast.
No, well, back then, no, not that fast.
All right, thanks, Rocco.
Yeah, I have no comments at this time, but would echo Peter's comments that this is a great improvement to the property.
I know this is going to seem like a crazy question, given the year, but given the different elevations, snow, storage, and removal is going to be key. I assume you're looking at that, given the layout.
Mm-hmm.
No other comment.
Thanks. Steve? I guess my comments, I don't know, I think somebody mentioned it, but you're putting the sidewalk along Route 9, if there's any way to buffer that, you know, usually I like to see a five-foot buffer on the sidewalk, so you're not walking so close to the fast traffic, if that's possible to fit in there. It's subject to DOT approval, of course. And it looks like you've got, you know, a lot of this designed for a specific tenant, so that's good, and you might have some spec as well. Like the connections to the Halftime and the bus stop you talked about, is there, is there any chance to move, you know, I see the trash up in front along Route 9, I don't know if there's a potential to move that toward the back somewhere, so it's not right out in public view.
Also well-covered in the comments letter.
Is it?
Yeah, so we'll get to that for sure.
And we talked about the blasting. Some trees, there's some trees along Route 9. I didn't see a lot of landscaping along Route 9 in your landscaping plan.
Yeah, I think initially, it was mostly stormwater management design, kind of heavy on that, but we will be adding landscaping.
All right, and what else did I have? Read my chicken scratch here. Any phasing proposed for how this will all come out?
Actually, no, this is all once.
Okay, great. One big, once and done, that's a good plan. And as others have said, this is going to be great to have an improvement to the old DuPontiac here.
Mm-hmm, yes. Can I ask a couple of quick questions?
Yeah, once, I had one more.
I thought you were done, sorry.
Ford, Ford's aware that they got to park cars somewhere else sometime?
Yes.
Okay, I assume.
All right, just two quick things. I know you mentioned, you know, the county's comment about a connection to the golf course. I know there's no connection now. Is there any way to just show us where a connection could potentially be in the future? You know, just, because I know the grading is a little bit challenging on the site, so just so we understand, maybe, not tonight, but, you know, for in the future, you know, where would that be possible? So if in the future there is something that happens, you know, that connection could be made. That's one. The other was, you know, the county, again, also talked about parking, they said, you know, there's quite a bit proposed and maybe shared, you know, because of shared parking, you may not need all of that. You mentioned that one of the reasons for the number of housing units is related to the parking. I'm wondering if there wouldn't be a possibility of adding some additional housing, maybe another floor, you know, if the parking worked, if the shared parking study that was being talked about could work. It just seems like some additional residential there would not be a bad thing for the project, and so, again, if, something to think about going forward, so.
Yep, I'll echo that comment, that sounds a good way to approach it, if there's some shared parking possibilities. All right, thanks.
I move that the planning board declare its intent to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as a type-one action and authorize the planning department circulation of a notice of said intent, a copy of the EAF, and a copy of the application to identified, interested, and involved agencies.
Second. Moved and seconded for lead agency. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
I move the planning board defer further action on this application pending establishment of a lead agency and direct the applicant to respond to comments and writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included, but not limited to the following, one through 12.
Second. Does that include comments from tonight?
It does. It does.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's move to seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. And I might, I don't know if you guys, you didn't do a pre-application meeting, but would you suggest the community, the town departments, agencies?
Well, we ended up doing sort of a post-application, pre-application meeting, so, but yeah, continued dialogue, definitely, as much as possible.
Before they reapply. No wasted efforts.
Absolutely.
All right, thanks, good seeing you guys.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night. Next up is Erie Materials on Chief Road.
Hey, Carol, I'm going to mute you for now, all right, just because we're getting a little background.
background.
Um, I'm not really there, unless there's something on the computer.
Oh, I don't know. I'm sorry. No, that's no problem, I'm just gonna, just so you know.
It's on the line.
All right, we'll let you know, we're gonna be calling you soon. All right, go ahead and introduce yourself and present your project.
Good evening, my name is Stephen Tinkelman, Tinkelman Architecture. To my right is Pat Ginto from Erie Materials, Christian Pajee, Pajee Engineering, and Robert Turner from Tinkelman Architecture. Thank you for hearing our application tonight. Interesting that we're working on a site that we were recently in front of you and got approved and worked diligently with you on that. Unfortunately, that endeavor didn't move forward, and so the Valley Christian Church sold the property, or is in the process of selling the property to Erie Materials. And part of it, I think, as you appreciated from the last effort here, is that it's a complicated site. We worked through a lot of problems. It's an old building that needs quite a bit of work, and so we're pleased to actually move forward with a great company that wants to put the effort into making this a real productive property and keep it on the tax rolls, which was different from the case with the church. So what I'd like to do to start with here is, you know, introduce Pat and let Pat talk to you a little bit about, you know, his company, so you have a feel for who they are and what they're about.
Good evening, thank you for hearing us. My name is Pat Ginto, I'm Vice President of Operations for Erie Materials. We're a building materials company, primary locations in New York and Pennsylvania. We have ten locations. Our base is Syracuse, New York, and our closest location to here would be Albany. So we sell building materials to the remodeling, mainly remodeling contractors, builders and general contractors. And we're eager and excited to come to the town of Poughkeepsie.
Great, so slash direct retail to customers, it's more of the contractors?
Yeah, it's wholesale distribution to contractors.
Oh, okay, great.
So I won't belabor this, but we might wanna just start to remind you what the site currently is set up. So we have a site plan and as-built survey. The building is approximately thirty thousand square feet. It has two levels in it. And if you remember from the last application, because of the location and the sighting of the structure within the property, we needed two variances on either side for sideyard setbacks. So we'll need to do that again as part of this application. But there's a large drop in property, in topography from the front along Chief Road to the back of the site, somewhere in the neighborhood of about thirty feet. I think on the next shot, I want to, again, give you a sense of, you know, what exists from an overhead view. The building in the center is the project, is the project site. Across the street is, what's the name of the plumbing company? I don't remember.
H D Supply.
H D.
H D Supply, yeah.
Thank you. H D Supply, and also to, I guess that is the north side of the property, you have an industrial site, and then there's some apartments that were just recently built on the other side up the hill. The apartments themselves are up about thirty-five feet from the property, so there's a, you know, a substantial elevation change. I shouldn't just throw that number out, because the site grades down, so, but it's a, there's a major change in elevation, which is really one of the benefits, because that building, if you're sitting in one of your apartments and looking out the window, you don't see this site at all, you're looking further out into the distance. The next slide here for your view is really what the building looks like currently, and you can see that it's in disrepair, you know, and, you know, the idea is not only to try to repurpose it, but also to work with the site as best as possible. Couple other shots that you can see to the rear of it, and, you know, again, you'll see as we show you the preliminary architectural views, that the plan is to reskin the building so that it'll, you know, have a brand-new feel to it when it's done. The building also is complicated. As Pat said, they're dealing with, you know, construction materials, some are good size. You have two elevations in the building, so there's some logistic things that we've been working through. On this conceptual site plan that, yeah, thank you, you can see in the darker blue, that's the existing building. And the macadam areas, you can see in the darker gray, we are gonna be widening the existing curb cut just to make it work better for some of the larger trucks that come and go here. And we're also given the odd configuration of topography, that the building itself is lower than the macadam in the front, so that you have to create these complex handicap ramps and sidewalks. So as you can see on the upper right-hand side of the building, there's, you know, you'll see that in the blow-up later on, but, you know, that's, you know, we're needing to pull, you know, away from the building a little bit to, you know, to be thoughtful to the customers and such. There is also the plan here, and I think it does a couple of things architecturally that are interesting, is you can see there's a lighter blue rectangle that we're looking at building out on the front of the building to break up the monotony of the facade. It's also part of the retail operation of Erie in what they're doing. There's about four thousand square feet of showroom area that's proposed right now, so the balance of the interior, which then becomes about twenty-seven thousand square feet, two-thirds or maybe a little bit more, is used for actually the storage of material and the rest of the office space and things for the employees and all that. So as you're moving around the building, again, we're limited by, you know, configuration of the property itself, but it works within the requirements of your ordinance in terms of lane widths and such like that. The first area behind the building, and again, you'll see this in more detail, and maybe backing up a little bit, one of the reasons for this presentation is to give you an idea of the direction we wanna go to with the project, and then try to talk to you a little bit about some of the issues that we're confronting here, and to get some feedback as well. The macadam area right behind the building is being, is set up for, you know, shipping and receiving, loading in the back, where there's an addition, that lighter blue odd shape in the back there is really a loading dock. It is covered so that people can, you know, unload a truck and not have to deal with the weather and all that. It also helps screen because it's walled off and roofed, it just opened on the loading dock side. That black line that you see that goes around, you know, to the radius there is a retaining wall. And that retaining wall, Christian will talk about a little bit in his presentation of the site, but, you know, there's a grade change there. With the lighter gray area, the goal is to create a flat area. So conceptually, that is a flat area where there will also be the outdoor storage. And then you can begin to see where the darker areas, there's some parking in the back, I think we have eighteen spaces in the back, maybe fifteen or eighteen. And you can also see within the storage areas, we're beginning to put some outdoor structures that are also covered for some material, and that does a couple of great things architecturally. It not only works for Erie to be able to cover and protect some of the materials, but it also creates a buffer to the properties to the rear. Again, the site here is conceptually about seventy-two as elevation, and the housing behind it runs fifty to sixty, mostly in the fifties, so the housing in the back are much lower. So given the structure, given the berm that's in the back, I don't know if you remember that, but the berm was, you know, kept intact so that there would be no visual contact from the residential, you know, housing that's a hundred and fifty feet behind the site. So the plan here really is to, you know, is to, you know, work within the ordinance. We're only allowed twenty-five percent of the site for the storage in the back, which is about thirty-nine thousand square feet, which is, we're a bit under that target. You know, we have a couple of other challenges, but you can see the plan if we go back to the front again. With it blown up, we're beginning to take a building that has no landscaping and to, you know, to try to beautify it that way. All the things that you normally require, that we're accustomed to working on with you in terms of dark sky, you know, creating all the code requirements, and also to try to, you know, make this attractive is really, you know, on our mission as well. The one thing that you can see is different on this slide is at the bottom, you know, on the south side of it, you can see there's a D N and a down for customer pickup, and that's set up so that when there are some smaller contractors or such, they can, there's an easy way to get their materials and stuff like that. So that's how that's set up. Because of the funky grade changes here, it creates a little bit of a longer ramp, so we've had to push the parking about eight or ten feet closer to the road. So that's the only real change to the macadam that you see along Chief Road, and that's just, again, a requirement dealing with the very complex series of grade changes that, you know, occur on the site. But you can also see there's a line on the inside of the building, and that shows where the grade changes are inside. So there's some pretty interesting challenges that we, I think we've worked through architecturally. On the next slide, again, these are just the beginnings of elevations here, but you, the plan is to have a new glass entrance that's framed in, you know, in a stone material. It's covered, so that ramp and the stairs that go, or the stairs that go into that front entrance will have, you know, a roof over it. Again, in our next submission, that'll be larger, so you get to really see the detail of it. To the left of that is where the addition is, so again, there's some glass into the showroom. It's also breaking up the long linear quality of, right now, it's one color, there are no windows, you know, it, you know, it's pretty mundane, you know, that's a nice way of putting it. You can see the new overhead door system that, you know, we have to the left of that as well. And then we're beginning to put some light into the, you know, and to break up the fenestration on the right side, which is really just storage area of material, but it makes the building look better from the street. As we go around in the middle layer there, you can see there's access on grade as you're coming around the side of the building. And then as you get further down, you can begin to see the new structure that we're talking about in the rear. The other part, when you see the, and then you see the rear and the back, you can begin to see how high that retaining wall is. So there is some considerable movement in the back as well. I'd like to turn this over to, you know, Christian, now, if you wanna talk about the site design.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. So we've put together a couple of preliminary plans. This first slide is demonstrating the circulation through the site for a tractor trailer, a W B fifty truck, which we have entering the site from the north, anticipating that it is, you know, coming off of Route 9 southbound onto Chief Road and then turning into the property. As Steve mentioned, we are widening the access, that curb cut to the site, in order to accommodate these larger truck maneuverings. We have received some of the comments about the diagram showing the tractor trailer going into, or crossing over that center line. So we'll be looking at this closer, we might have to widen that access even further to accommodate the truck traffic, but we'll be working through that with Andy and with your, the rest of the staff and the board, make sure everybody is comfortable with what's being shown. But the idea is that the largest truck, this W B fifty, would be anticipated to come down through, the only access really, down to the rear of the site. And there are two areas where we have it shown backed into. One is, the upper area is the loading dock, which Steve was explaining, and the other lower area is this lower flat storage, outdoor storage area, so, which is highlighted in that beige color. So the, that storage area is, again, as Steve mentioned, the intention is to have that as flat as possible. So as you work towards the building, there'll be a significant cut there, and the retaining wall, as proposed, is a fairly significant structure, anywhere from sixteen to eighteen feet tall in some places. So we'll be providing, obviously, more details to that, and that was addressed in Andy's letter. But again, the idea is to create as flat an area as possible down in the rear of the building for storage of these materials. The benefit to that as far as screening, you're lowering the grade back there, so a lot of that storage area will be, you know, lower than existing grade and lower than the surrounding properties, including the properties to the west, which are screened by the existing berm and vegetation. So that will, I mean, the lower we can get it, the more out of sight it will be. So there's an additional benefit to that. We are also showing in the southwest corner refuse area, we know that we'll need to have an enclosure for that, and we'll be providing details for the board to review also. If you wanted to go to the next page, we just show a preliminary grading plan. We know that we need to provide plenty more details relative to grading, utilities, stormwater design. For the previous application, we were proposing infiltration. We expect to do the same here, only with this application, since the majority of this area is going to be needed for storage, it will be subsurface infiltration. So we'll be supplying a stormwater pollution prevention plan and all the details for that. Water and sewer, we, water is, there's an existing connection to the town municipal water system. Again, similar with the previous application, we were proposing to upgrade meters and backflow prevention devices, we'll be doing the same here. For sewer, that's, we know that's another lengthy discussion, which we need to work through with the town and with the health department. It's been complicated with the issue of the new private pump station to the north, so we'll be working through that. Right now, we're proposing an onsite sewage disposal system. The previous application had an onsite sewage disposal system that was approved by the health department, so this site has an approved sewage disposal system. The intent would be to modify that design, but obviously that would require health department review and approval. And we know that the discussion relative to potential transportation corporations or potential town dedication, dedication of that pump station to the town are still ongoing, so that's going to be an ongoing conversation, we know.
Probably much smaller flows than the church would have had.
Exactly, so the, to put it in perspective, I think that the daily flow that the septic system for the church was designed for was five hundred gallons a day, and that was really because they were expecting two thousand gallons on Sunday and basically nothing for the rest of the week. This, the flows for this are probably going to be half of even the five hundred gallons a day. So we're not talking high water sewer demand here. So a part of the conversation relative to hooking up and tying fees and, you know, entering into an agreement with the adjacent property owner, again, for, because right now, this, the way that that system exists as a private system, the economics need to work out for both sides, so, and that's what's being worked out right now, so. But we'll be working closely with Andy and with the health department to work those items out. But as Steve mentioned, the intent of this submission, obviously this was more of a sketch plan with additional construction and design details that need to be provided. There are certain items that we need the board's feedback on. There are certain items that we need the board's feedback on to make sure that this is something that you are in favor of or could support based on some of the either waivers or, or variances that would, would be required. And I, I think I'll let Steve address those. I'm happy to address those also.
That was a team effort.
Yeah. Unless you have questions on the civil, we can move on the, onto those items.
So I think one of the things that Christian says is that, you know, for example, that the septic is, you know, potentially half of what was approved in the last iteration. A lot of the functions on the site are really a light imprint. They're, the plan, you know, you know, this is a 3.6 acre site that Valley, the, the Valley Christian, you know, had 120 parking spaces in the back. We were required by ordinance to, you know, have the same thing, about 120 parking spaces based upon the, you know, what's required. But you, as a board, have the ability to waive that. So we went through an analysis with Pat on how many people are going to be working here, what his customer flows are like, what other vehicles are going to be on site, both looking at his other operations and, you know, what their business plan here is. So we're proposing 38 spaces, which is more than we need, but it sure, you know, makes the site, you know, so that you're not over parking it and creating meadow where you don't need it. The other thing as part of our, you know, working through the design here is that, is that the, the, currently the, the plan is that the Erie's can have four to six trucks on the site that they use for their deliveries. And those trucks go three or four times a day. So that, you know, could be 18 trips or 20 some odd trips. So you can see that that's not a lot of trips given a 10-hour operating timeframe. They also get deliveries for their material and maybe they'll get three or four deliveries in a day. And then you have some of the customers that come up to the front. So you can see that this is, is really not, you know, from a, you know, a use perspective, it's not, you know, you know, overly intense in that regard. But we still need to, you know, work that through with you so that you're comfortable with the calculations on the parking so that, you know, you can feel comfortable in justifying what, you know, what we're doing here. I think the other, other thing is in that, in that calculation is we looked at the number of employees that were going to be on the, you know, working here and on the road. That number is about 20, 20 people will be on site and five are on the road, you know, four to six are on the road. So as, again, you're in the range of 25, 25 people. And I actually underspoke the Valley Christian was going to have 160 parking spaces. This is, so, so the other, the other issues that, that may require variances, I'm not sure about this, but we are moving the, you know, the parking closer to Chief Road on that, on that north side of the building. And, you know, again, it, it makes for a better use of this, of the site from a functional point of view. We're able to, you know, to landscape it and it'd be attractive.
Do you know, do you know Chief a town road or is that a county?
It's a county, I believe.
County?
It's a county road.
Oh, no. It's a county road.
Okay.
Is that right?
Just seeing who he has, who he has to deal with.
I'm pretty sure it's a town road.
Oh, it is town, huh? Okay.
And, and, you know, essentially that's, you know, our, our presentation. We, there is one other issue that becomes complicated is the site is, is planned to be fenced, you know, as per your ordinance. And it also, you know, protects the yard for, you know, and, and again, you know, the way Erie's yards are, are managed, I mean, they're meticulous and organized and they need to be given the nature of the business. So there'll be a combination of fences or with these sheds in the back that will act as, as buffer as well. There is the complication of the apartments, you know, on the south. And that is, that fence does nothing in terms of, you know, creating a visual buffer. Because the fence is eight feet high, you'd have to make the fence 50 feet or 40 feet tall, which you're not going to do. But, you know, again, given the angle of that building and the elevation, how much higher, excuse me, it is above the site, you know, as I mentioned before, if you're sitting in your apartment, you're looking at-
You're talking about the apartments up in the north.
In the north, yeah.
North, yeah. Sorry about that. And, you know, but, but there's a, you know, there is a requirement that is, it's not, it's not a zoning requirement as much as it's in the purview of your, of this board to discuss how the buffer works. And the buffer, it talks about 100 feet as a goal, but then it reduces it by 50% if it's an adaptive reuse of an existing building, which this is. And we were looking for some guidance on how to do this because it's so complicated. If, if it wasn't for the elevation change, it would be easy to do.
Right.
You know, and so, so that, you know, that seems to be from our, from a planning point of view, the more complicated of the issues that we would appreciate some of your feedback as well.
Yeah, I mean, we'd be concerned about, you know, what are your hours of operation and, and what kind of noise and light the, you know, the apartments might feel.
So we're going to identify. The, the noise shouldn't be an issue, given the, and we'll be able to give you that, you know, that information. The hours of operation Monday through Friday is, is about 6:30 to 4:30. The, most of the work that takes place outside is probably starting at 7:00 or 7:30, but the operation starts, people come on, on site at 6:30. On the weekend, it's really running from, you know, 7:30 to 11 o'clock in the morning and that's it. So those are, those are the limited hours. No evenings, there's no, you know, weekend afternoons or anything like that. So I think, Christian, do you have anything else?
Only once we get into the discussion of, of variances, I know that we were slightly over the, 5% over the impervious cover. I wasn't sure if one of the ways to mitigate that was like a permeable hardscape, if that was permitted or if that was still considered an impervious cover. I know that there's sometimes differences between zoning definitions and engineering definitions. The intent would be if that was acceptable, we would be replacing some of the asphalt with a permeable type-
Okay.
-hardscape, either paper or, or permeable asphalt.
Andy can help answer that when the time comes.
I guess another, another point, you bring up lighting quite a bit, which is that we have the benefit here of not even, not needing to have a very high foot candle level in the evening because of the nature of what's going on on the site. So that not only will it be dark sky, but the, the levels of illumination will need to work through with you because it, it doesn't need to be like if it was a retail operation or something like that. So I think that's good for the adjacencies in that regard. You know, the, again, the, so you'll, we'll be submitting a full lighting plan and a full landscaping plan as always.
All right. Thanks for your presentation. Eric is on. Eric?
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Coming through loud and clear.
Good. There is, there is periodic static coming from your end. I don't know why. Let's see. So this application, thank you very much for the introduction, Steve and Christian and Mr. Ginto, I said that right. It's on for secret declaration of lead agency, site plan and architectural review. The staff recommendation is to proceed with the lead, the, the lead agency declaration and circulate this. Subject to comments, there's a, I guess the key issues for discussion by the board would have to do with the use. It's a, the contractor, the bill of materials, sales and storage facility screened is the use. And the, the key issues are really the noise, screening with regard to noise and visual. Site seems like it could work well for this kind of a use, but those issues would need to be addressed in particular for the residential use, multifamily residential use to the north. As Steve talked about it, yes, the planning board does have discretion over how to handle that. When we met with the applicant, we suggested that one approach to that might be to provide one or more sightline cross-sections from north to south between the storage area and the residential apartments so that reviewers and the board could get a sense of what is the height differential between the two uses? Where will the sightlines be too? How much of the storage yard would be visible? Agreed, an eight-foot fence at the bottom of the hill is probably not going to do much. But we did talk about, you know, what about the potential for, is there potential for plantings along the property line to grow over time? Or for the applicant to propose taller plantings on the, on the neighbor's property if they wanted that as a mitigation if the screening can't be met? Similarly, we also need a lot more information on all of the sources of noise from the proposed operation. And that will allow the planning board to better assess, you know, the level of discretion that they might like to use for this application. Probably, those are the key issues, only the impervious to Andy. On, on the, Andy will also talk about the sewer. I know the pre, I was going to point out, the previous applicant had notes on their plans that provided for a future sewer if the, if it became available, if the pump station were dedicated, the opportunity became available. So Andy and the applicant might consider, I guess it'd be interesting to know if the applicant was receptive to that. And then lastly, I guess, you know, if you, if we're available to meet and talk about some of the technicalities like cross-sectional views or evaluation of noise that the applicant would like.
All right. Thanks, Eric. And so it's just on for lead agency. We'll, we'll go to Andy for his initial swag at it.
Uh, yeah. I, I mean, I think everybody got a copy of the email from Jim T. at the health department. You know, Christian, I think you got a copy too. I think that's going to be a key issue that we need to kind of try to hash out sooner rather than later. Maybe meeting with the three of us would be a good idea to try to resolve that. That's probably should happen early before we go too far with this. I had some other questions. I wasn't clear what the, the outdoor storage area surface was. Is it gravel?
It's going to be paved.
Oh, it will be paved.
It will be paved. We'll clarify all that. It was a different color just to distinct, to create distinction of what was actually travel aisle and parking versus our storage area because there's a percent requirement under the zoning table, how much can be reserved for storage. So we'll clarify that. We'll make the graphics a little bit better, but it's all intended to be paved.
Gotcha. Okay. That's good. That, I think that makes sense. Then as far as like the access to the refuse area, I, you know, I'm sure, like you said already, the, the storage material obviously has to be very organized and you have to have a path to get there. Assume that that's an aisle that will always be available. As usual, we'd kind of like to see the, the refuse turning movement, refuse truck turning movements to see how that works.
No problem.
Let's see. We did ask for a couple of easements, especially with respect to that pump station that's down there. It would be much easier for the town to gain access through this driveway if at all possible. And then we'd like you to consider possibly an easement to benefit some of the other properties south of here to allow them to gain access to that pump station if, if possible in the future. Let's see. I think those, those are kind of the, the main, the main things I want to touch on. So that's enough for now.
Great. Thanks, Andy. And Carol is on, I believe, to talk, there's a wetland behind there somewhere, so she's our consultant for that.
Yes, hello. There is a wetland. It had been delineated with the previous, with the previous occupant or potential occupant.
Could you just stop sharing?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Hang on. Carol, I'm just going to get, get the screen unshared and maybe we can see you as well. There we go. Okay. Go ahead, Carol.
So the, the wetland is shown on the, on the plans, as is the 25-foot buffer. The 25-foot buffer can be related to the stream that's in the back, but there, there is a wetland. It does come a little closer, but probably not closer than 25 feet to the site. But it is at the base of the berm. The berm is quite significant, quite steep. And it is, you know, our, my comments with the last applicant was to preserve the berm in its entirety. And so that's pretty much been kept with this application. With the exception of there is a, a line back there that I've spoken to Christian about. We're going to try to, I'm not sure if he's been able to relocate that little section of stormwater to, to stay entirely on the upgrading side of the berm so that there is no disturbance to the berm. With that, really, that's, that's all we can do. It's, it's just a kind of a technicality that they're within a, a buffer, but there's no disturbance. The other comment was, which I had not put on this letter, was about the Indiana bats. Yes, the DEC has indicated that they're in the area. It's a summering habitat. But Steve, it looked like one of the aerials that you had shown first, all the trees were lying down. So had these been cut? I know we've given Dr. Christian permission to cut the trees before-
Yeah, yeah. There's nothing there now. It's just-
Okay. Okay. So no, no additional trees to come down. We're, we've alleviated that issue as well. So if we can, can keep that stormwater line on the upgrading side of the berm and not disturbing any, any, any additional disturbance to the berm, we're good with that.
All right. Thanks, Carol.
And that's it.
Let's go around the board for comments. Start with Steve this time.
Uh, no comment.
Joe?
Um, for the trucks, like what's the earliest in the morning you would have a truck coming to the site? You say it would open at 6:30. Would trucks be coming in that early or would they generally be coming in later in the day?
From a delivery, from a incoming material standpoint, we would, we would schedule them, they would, they would have a 7:30 to 4:30 timeframe incoming for receiving. Our outgoing trucks would probably get started a little bit earlier than that.
Okay. So there's the potential for the trucks to be there very early on site, starting up and, and starting their day? Is that what you're saying?
So for receiving? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Yeah. So they would, they would be coming in no earlier than 7:30.
Okay.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't be open, we open our doors at 7:30.
Okay.
So, so prior to that, you know, the, the area will be fenced off and we won't, our people that'll be on site will be working from the back just to open things up and to start getting our stuff prepped.
Okay. And I see that you have a, a gate along the side and stop signs? Is that just to make sure you never have two trucks trying to get through that space at the same time?
That's our intent.
Yeah. And are all trucks that come on, it's scheduled? It's not like something would show up at the site unanticipated?
No, there, there could be just unanticipated. I mean, they're, they're roofing trucks primarily, so it's, it's shingle product. So they, they get loaded by a common carrier that brings them in from the manufacturer.
Okay. And I didn't see snow storage depicted on the site. Will that be added? Yeah. All right. That's it. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Veronica?
Yeah. I know it's early here, but the, the storage areas that you have there in the back, you mentioned open storage, but then you also mentioned the sheds. Is it going to be both?
The majority will be open storage. There's one structure in the rear that will be a three-sided structure that's shown on. It stores the back facing, the back of that is facing the berm.
It's outlined on the site.
It's outlined there as being open and that, and, and the fencing, no proposed, would that be open fencing or will it be weaved so that you can't see through?
We'll, we'll work that detail through.
Okay.
You know, the, the, the one storage facility that we're, we're showing is 72 feet long by 24 feet and it does have a back wall on, so that creates the, you know, that, it'll act as a fence on that side.
Like a screen and effect. All right. Yeah, I think that's it for now. Thank you.
All right. And Nicole?
I don't think I have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Ben?
Only question I have is the outdoor storage, is it just dry goods or will there be liquids also?
Just dry goods.
Just, just dry goods?
Yep.
Okay. That's it?
So no roofing tower or anything like that?
No, that's in the north.
That's in, oh, okay.
And there's very little of that anymore.
All right. And Peter?
Bruce, thanks for coming to our town. Really appreciate, appreciate having you.
Really appreciate having you here. Uh the septic system that was previously approved is it was in the same location as the one that's being proposed now?
We'll have to move move that the um just because of the the retaining wall that's proposed, the proximity to that uh the approved septic location, uh it's too close, we would need to move it. So the intention would be to relocate it actually to the front of the building.
The the plan that I have locates the septic system to the rear of the property. Is that incorrect?
Says your uh underground.
Last.
You might be seeing the stormwater.
Sorry, sorry. Uh I visited the condominium that's to the west of this site, drove into the units that were closest toward it. And really, from that distance, even though it's winter, it's it's fairly well contained. You know, it's not really, there's not really a lot of visual impact there. As far as the apartment building is concerned, they came to us to change the zoning. And they're they were fully aware of what, you know, we had a building uh supply across the street. We had this building and and others there. It's really more like a light industrial area. They are, if you walk on to the rear of the site, you really have to crane your neck to see the apartments. I mean, it's just such a substantial difference in elevation between this site and the apartment site. I honestly, I don't know uh what we have available to us in terms of plants or fencing really to have any any way of mitigating. Uh so I would suggest that you, I don't think there's anything reasonably that you could do, that we reasonably could ask you to do because it must be at least 30, this could be 30 feet difference in the in the elevation. I don't think there's anything that that you do would have any impact in terms of mitigation between those those two sites. Uh listen, I think I agree that you should uh sooner than later uh meet with the county and figure out what they want you to do or or whatnot. But it'd be to your benefit to do that as soon as you possibly can. You know, time is money and the and the clock is ticking. So, you know, as soon as they're available with our engineer or whomever else would like to be there, I think really think you should do that. Because they seem fairly adamant in the way they 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 phrase their 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 view. So I would talk to them. And uh that's pretty much it. Thanks.
Thanks, Peter. Yeah, I mean, I echo your concern, you know, concern about any kind of landscaping on your property is not going to really do much, but as I think it was suggested by someone that potential to approach the uh the apartments, they put something up on top of the, if they wanted some shrubs or something up on the top of their.
But it's really up to them.
On there, but that's totally up to them. Exactly. It's a, I don't know. It's tough. I so I'm glad to hear the hours of operation are not starting at 4:00 AM or 5:00 AM or something. So so as far as noise for the apartments will be less. Um so lighting is lighting is will be minimal. Um I think it would be a great use of the the site, the way it drops off there. Noise, I guess the biggest noise thing I see is like backup alarms on on trucks and and you probably have a bunch of forklifts running around as well. They may have alarms on them as well. So I don't know if anything can be done to minimize the loudness of those or or what, but something to to think about. If they're if they're adjustable at all.
Might be an OSHA requirement there.
Yeah, there's a certain certain.
There's also different type of backup alarm that can be used.
Okay.
Than the normal.
Like an ice cream truck.
Beep. It it sounds more like static than.
Oh, than the beeping? Okay. Something like that might be a better alternative than the than the loud beeps. Especially early in the morning. Um that's it. Looks good. Welcome back to town. Hopefully it works out.
I move the planning board declare its intent to be the secret lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an enlisted action and authorize the planning department circulation of a notice of intent, a copy of the EF and a copy of the application to all involved and interested agencies.
Second. Moved and seconded for lead agency. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Move the planning board defer further action on this application pending the establishment of lead agency. Direct the applicant to respond in writing to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included but not limited to the following 1 through 13.
Second. Moved and seconded. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for presentation. Good luck. Next up is Junior's Bar and Tavern on Dutch's Turnpike.
You see, we've got a crowd that's here to see your application.
Last but not least. Oops. Good evening, everybody. Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. For the record, my name is Frank Rettel. I'm the project manager for 4K's Real Estate. With me this evening is Lou Rossi. Uh 4K's stands for Kim, Kelly, Kari, Christie, Rettel. It's a Rettel property. And we've entered into an agreement with Lou uh where he would be purchasing 1126 Dutch's Turnpike from us, subject to approvals by this board and Board of Health. Um just to give you a little background, Lou and his wife Nancy owned and operated uh Junior's Lounge on Salt Point Turnpike. In June of last year, his professional life was ended when a tractor trailer drove through his building. It didn't hit the building, he drove right through it. It was a total loss. Since then, Lou and Nancy have been looking for another location because they'd like to continue with with Junior's. Uh he came across this property, we worked a deal with him and we're under contract and is subject to getting approval with this board. Uh I've known, just at the risk of sounding old, I've known Lou and Nancy for over 50 years. We went to high school together. Then and now, uh Lou and Nancy have been known as honest, hardworking people and we're very excited to present this application to the board. We think it's a good use for the property and we're certain that Lou's going to do a nice job if we get approvals from this board. Um just to walk you through the site a little bit.
Is this working?
Yeah. Okay. This shows the existing site. Uh right now, there's a 1,600 square foot building. It's had a lot of uses in the past. It's been a pizza place, it's been a video store, it was a Mackey's Pub before that, and most recently it was a hairdresser and they've moved out. There's also a garage on the property that's not in very good shape. There is about 18 parking spaces presently on the on the property. There's only one site improvement that we'd like to make with this application. Actually, two. In the rear of the building, we want to put in a 20 by 30-foot outdoor deck. It'd be cement. Uh of course, it would be seasonal and weather permitting use. And we're also going to put in a garbage enclosure here, too. Based upon the square footage, we need 22 parking spaces. And I've looked at all the comments that I've received from the from different departments. I didn't get anything from engineering, but I'm sure you have some. Okay. We're in the pri- we had a big meeting this morning with Lou's architect and we're in the process of trying to reconfigure the parking because the way it's originally laid out, it needs some tweaking. Uh the suggestion was to remove parking space one, nine, and 10. We agreed to that because it'll keep a nice flow of traffic here. And I also think the subjection, the suggestion of just one-way traffic is probably a good one, too. So we're in the process of trying to do that. We do have topos now. Across the street from us is Friendly Honda. Over here is a gas station. On this end here is just vacant wooded area. There is a residence behind us here.
Right.
The topos, when we submit those, you'll see that the house is 30 feet higher than this property. I mean, it's just a steep bank.
Yes.
You can barely even see the house and I don't think you'll see it when all the leaves are out. Uh we're in the process of trying to work through all of the comments. We've already engaged Joe Berger to inspect the existing septic system. It's municipal water, private septic. Joe Berger is in the process of inspecting and certifying the system and he's going to be working with Jim Key to work out any Board of Health issues. We're only proposing 48 seats altogether inside and out. Uh we're pretty confident that the existing septic system is also an underground grease uh grease trap, too. We think it's going to work fine. We'll also be revising the narrative because I want to go through all the criteria for the outside dining requirements on the code. I do want to talk briefly about the new code session for EV charging stations. I understand the the spirit and intent of that. If you've got an office building um or grocery store where you have employees in the building for eight to 10 hours, it would really be beneficial. People are not going to be at Junior's for eight to 10 hours. They're not going to be served alcohol that long. And in all honesty, I I can see the benefits of the EV charging stations in some situations, but I don't see the benefit for this site or to the patrons of Junior's for the EV charging station. We'll probably be asking this board to waive that requirement on the condition that we install infrastructure in case EV charging stations are put in at a later date. We can keep, we can put the electric there. But we can discuss that when we submit again. Um other than that, I'm anxious to see what the board has for comments and we'd like to work through this as quickly as possible with you.
All right. Thanks for your presentation. Eric, this is yours.
Yeah. Uh let's see. Uh this is the application, uh staff's recommending a declaration of lead agency intent and circulation, uh which will then require 30 days to reply. Uh it's all for site plan and also for special use permit to proposed bar tavern. Um unlike restaurants in the uh in the in the neighborhood business district, restaurants are permitted by right. Bar tavern use requires a special use permit uh from the board for the the issue for any neighborhood issues that it brings up. Um the site does appear reasonable for this kind of a use. It's mostly a commercial area. Uh there is the adjacent residence to the rear, uh which it's my understanding is actually visible through the trees um as it stands today. Um but there does seem to be some separation. The uh that would be mostly the board's concern with some of the layout, also the parking. Um the county had also commented on the extension of pavement along the highway frontage. I mean, in fact, the parking aisle is presently using the DOT right-of-way for parking and maneuvering. Um most other uses in the vicinity uh have driveways through that right-of-way buffer but not parking and and adjust and uh maneuvering within it. So we're suggesting that that the applicant work with the board to see how much they might move parking back um to the face of the building or to the side and rear as much as possible rather than extending it along the front. Um otherwise, our comments are there and would look forward to the applicant. We're happy to meet with them to work out any uh to work out any details and move it forward.
If I could just address something that Eric talked about. When you'll see with the topography, there's only about 40 feet behind the building if that's level.
Is the microphone, is the mic on? Just uh?
It's on.
Okay.
All right. There's only about 40 or 50 feet behind the building that's level. Then it starts going up. So parking behind the building is not going to be viable, but one of the things we're looking at is there's billboards here, too.
Yep.
We have to take, when when Lou purchases this property, he'll be taking over the billboards uh from highway to spike. We have to take a look at the lease agreements that we have with them because it's also possible that Lou may want to consider taking down one or two of the billboards to make more room for parking over here. Uh it's just something, it's the early stages, we just want to take a look at it. We don't know if we can do that, but it's a possibility. Um also, I didn't add, there's presently two telephone poles here. They're marked as TP. We'll put that in the legend identified as telephone poles, not to be confused with toilet paper. Uh the telephone poles have lights, so it helps illuminate the parking lots. We are proposing a couple of lights in the front and in the back with some landscaping in the back. There's also existing landscaping on the sides of the building and a small area in the front of the building. There's a presently a handicap ramp in the front of the building going in for ADA access.
Thank you, Frank. If there are also number of comments seeking more information like topography and lighting and the landscaping, which I know does exist alongside parts of the building. So if we could just get that onto the plan, it'll help us, um it'll help the board work through some of those issues. Thank you.
Will do, Eric. Thank you.
There's quite a bit of grass in front of the billboards, too, and maybe some parking could fit in there anyway with.
Yep.
Although you gotta watch out for the lea- who's leasing it and tall truck blocking them.
Yeah. If you park in front of it, you hide the billboard.
Right.
So just a couple of things to work out.
All right. Go around for comments, Peter.
Want to hear from Andy?
Oh, oh, right, right. Sorry.
Everybody wants to hear from Andy. Jump right in there.
You're welcome to my copy of comments, by the way.
Before Andy talks, I did notice when I was out there earlier, there was there was some groundwater on the surface there behind the parking on the north side of the building. So I don't know what the infiltration is like.
I saw that today, too.
Um, okay. So um, yeah, so obviously, you know, working out uh the septic uh design and and acceptability obviously is high on our on our list and we'll be looking for Joe's comments to or report to the health department uh to make sure that that works out. Um we also had similar concerns about parking layout um and and the fact that it's in and located in the DOT. I um I actually wonder if you could could please in the next plan show where the billboards are located. I wonder if the the proposed layout is actually um the current proposed parking layout uh might be overlaid with with that.
It is. As a matter of fact, we got a preliminary plan just late this afternoon and we were looking at it. So the billboard, one set of billboards is where the parking is proposed.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll have to rearrange that.
Rearrange a little bit, yep. Um so I think, I mean, and obviously, we also, we also had some comments about handicap parking and how that's going to be configured. Um but that that pretty much, you know, snow storage areas, that kind of thing. That's that's pretty much it.
Yep. Some grass areas and such behind parking. Um all right, now, Peter.
What's the plan for, you have your listed frame, structure, garage. What is your plan for that building?
We're gonna probably take it down.
Are you gonna take it down? I mean, there's no roof.
There isn't. It looks like it's about to fall. One side of the roof is missing and we think it'd be better off if we took it down and moved the parking back that way so we have a bigger aisle when you're coming in and leaving.
Now, uh following up on what Eric had to say, or Carl, there is significant ponding. It hasn't rained for quite a while and there's significant ponding surrounding the rear of the of the building. There is a storm drain.
There's the garage.
Does the, is the town involved at all in drainage from the from the uh from the grade behind that building, you know? Is there a storm drain?
I I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah. Because I'm then the, I'm guessing that the the water is flowing off that hill and onto your property and it's not draining. Uh there's the drain is active, but I couldn't tell whether it was, what direction it's coming from, whether it was coming from across the street or from your property, but Uh, there's, the drain is active, but I couldn't tell whether it was, what direction it's coming from, whether it was coming from across the street or from your property, but it's probably something you wanna, wanna take a look at.
Yes.
Otherwise, that's it?
Yeah, I mean, if it gets colder than it, like it's supposed to be in February, then you'll wind up with ice there and dangerous issues. Ben, what do you think?
I think this is good use of this property. I think you finally hit on something that's gonna last. I know you have a big following, me included, so good luck with it.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Steve?
Hi, Noah for comment.
Joe?
I have no comment. Thank you.
Yeah, no, no comment at this time.
Uh, not much. I mean, I agree with you. I don't think you guys need to put in any EV charging station. I know that's kind of what they want to happen now, but I, I would say that we could probably do something, say something, if, if and when this is approved, saying that that's not needed.
Unless it's a supercharger that can do it in fifteen minutes, but that's something different.
Yeah, absolutely. And the, my other, uh, comment was, um, you know, obviously you're gonna have to talk to the Department of Health.
Yes.
Cause they had some comments about, uh, how many people and, and things of that sort.
We jumped in right away. We have Berger working on it.
Yeah, so other than that, I haven't had anything else.
Biggest issues, uh, yeah, so I guess the only concern is that, you know, the neighbor's right up on the hill there, so I wasn't sure what your hours of operation were planning to be. Especially, especially the outside use, the patio, like. Well, the outside, that, at dusk, dark. It's gonna be, we're not gonna light it up. Plan to light that till two in the morning or something, have a bit, okay. So that's, that's kind of my, my concern is just noise and lighting. That's not gonna be, you know, once the sun sets, that's about it.
And there's no music outside either?
There's no music. Okay, that's a part of the town code, so that sounds good. That's mainly the, uh, my concern for that neighbor. Wondered about the, you know, the garbage you had on that side, you know, in front of that neighbor's house. I don't know if we could move the garbage to the north side, so it catches any odors that go up the hill. Uh, just a thought.
Yeah, well, okay. It's a thought.
And, uh, that's all I have, and I think it, I think it would be a good use.
Okay. I move the planning board declare its intent to be secret lead agency, coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action and authorize the planning department circulation of a notice of intent, a copy of the EF and a copy of the application to all involved and interested agencies.
Second. Moved and seconded for lead, uh, to circulate for lead agency. Called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
I move the planning board defer further action on this application pending the establishment of the agency, direct the applicant to respond in writing to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included but not limited to the following one through ten.
Second. Moved and seconded. Called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
One last request. Um, based upon the number of changes we're gonna make, we'll not make the submission date of next Tuesday for the March meeting. So we're looking at an April meeting. Is it possible to schedule a public hearing for the April meeting so we can try to keep moving? We're just trying to get Lou open sooner than later.
Yeah, I think it's possible that we can do that, yeah. Uh, that shouldn't be, uh, shouldn't be a problem. Um, it may also help, uh, since you have a little bit of extra time, uh, if, if you wanna go over some of the changes that you're talking about making with staff, um, you know, in advance, maybe just to, you know, address, to see that we've, that we're satisfied with the, the changes that you're making, right?
We can move forward with the public hearing at that time. That's fine.
Right, yeah, you know, just to get you a little further along.
That's fine.
Happy to do that.
Yeah. Don't waste time submitting something that they find a major issue with or something, so.
Great, thank you all.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for hanging in there. It was a long, long night, I know.
If the key is on the table, put me in front of it.
I think we have to honor that request. I, I don't know. I'm, yeah, let's make a note of that. That's fair, that's fair. Alright, so.
Well, that might, that was particular project as well. Camot Village Mobile Home Park, um, is on for extension, so I move the planning board grant two ninety-day time extensions for the Camot Village Mobile Home Park. I meant the site plan two application, moving the expiration date from May twentieth, two thousand twenty-three forward to November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Moved and seconded for time extension. Called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Alright, and before we adjourn, I just have a couple of quick things. I'll be really brief.
Ben's not here, so it's six.
Oh, six.
Oh, sorry, six to zero.
So first of all, thank you very much for the pizza on behalf of, uh, the staff. Everyone really enjoyed it, so we just wanna say appreciate that. Uh, I did also want to mention, since it's the beginning part of the year, uh, you know, training credits. Um, we, we, the town board recently approved the training credits from last year, so that's, you know, that's all done. Um, not everyone has met the requirement for four hours. Um, we, we'd just like to encourage you to please do that. Rachel will continue to send around information about, you know, when the Dutchess County Planning Federation and other organizations have those trainings. Uh, but that is an obligation. It is the law, so if you could please make sure to do that.
Yep, I'm on the Dutchess County Planning Federation board. We have, uh, we have about four hours of training coming up in May, so please look for those notes.
Can I get my tax training to come?
No, no, I'm sorry.
So please, please look for those, that notification. Rachel usually sends it out and forwards those notes, so you can sign up and register. It's pretty easy.
And, uh, lastly, I know that everyone is dying to have one of these beautiful ID cards, cause you know, it's a fashion statement, but, um, it, Carl and I had been talking, he mentioned that not everyone has one, uh, because we haven't done them in, in, in a while. Um, and there's some new members. It's sometimes helpful if you're going out to visit a site or something like that, to have that in your pocket, so you can, if someone asks you a question, you can say to where you're there. Um, if you're interested in doing that, I, I've coordinated with Tim Millard, our IT guy, uh, to maybe be here next month. Uh, we could do it, I was thinking before the field trip or, or after the field trip. And/or before this meeting, cause I know not everyone can make it to the field trip. He just needs to take a picture of you basically, and then he can make the cards, so.
I have one.
What's that?
I have one.
You still have one?
I have one too.
Yeah.
Some of you might, I know Carl's looks really old and hardly official looking.
I need to know when I get to.
These were taken quite a while ago.
I inherit it.
These have special security features now. Not really, but. That's all I got. Thank you.
Alright, anyone, any other business before the board? I move we terminate the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Thanks, everyone.
Good night. Good night.
Good night. Thanks, thanks you guys.